The meeting's called to order at 7:31. And let's start with the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Irene, will you take the roll call?
Sure. Um, Dr. Mono.
I received an email from her. She is in France. She's excused.
Liz Hollingsworth.
I'm here.
Lois Derry. Mary Sue.
Hey.
Hey.
Happy New Year.
Eldon Swanson.
Here.
Genevieve Chen.
Right here.
And Steve Domine.
Here.
Great.
Since Dr. Mono is in France, she did read the agenda. She has sent me an email with a couple of comments that asked me to go ahead and share. And I'd like to start by introducing our new city council liaison, Susan Jacobowski. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we're so glad that you're here.
Thank you.
Is it true that Gretchen Shepherd-Rumey is the alternate?
I believe that to be true. I hope to be able to attend most, if not all, meetings. Gretchen, as we know, is very, very busy. What I have found in my first two years of serving the city is my board and liaison roles vary depending on the group. So I can be whatever you would like me to be in terms of this role. And please feel comfortable to use me in that way. I spoke briefly with Liz over the weekend, and I am delighted. The depth of involvement the library has come to have with budget planning process as a city, I think we're becoming much smoother. You will not be necessarily looking with capital projects, but capital equipment, I would envision, more. I love the fact that we, as you know, are doing multi-year projections. So it allows you to give us a priority of how you'd like those items to be looked at. We are moving along quickly, and we look forward to input. Thank you.
Well, we're glad you're here. And you're starting off right as being an early-morning person.
This is late in my day. Thank you.
So let's go ahead with Agenda Item 1, the approval of the minutes from November 25. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I had a comment, or a correction on the 25th minutes. Amanda Fowler's title is not correct out there. She's our community engagement manager and not assistant to the city manager.
Do you remember, see what page it is?
It says the first page.
First page.
When does the change happen?
She may have worked at that time.
Okay.
So, community engagement manager?
Yes.
I only learned that because I was at the...
You're the community engagement manager.
Let's attempt to try to clarify this meeting format when I'm doing explosive, kind of nuanced government titles.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some.
The second?
A second.
So moved by Mr. Domeyer, seconded by Mr. Swanson. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go on to the chairperson and trustees' reports. Dr. Mono sends her greetings from Paris, I will say. She has a comment about the calendar, our meeting calendar, and the changes in the walkway in front of the Friends Bookshop. So I'll bring those up when we come to that. Okay, are we going to come to those? The calendar, we will.
The calendar. I do not have that. Jennifer kept saying, "Print it out." And I don't have it, but we'll get it out too soon as we can.
Okay. Her comment about our meeting calendar is that the Fourth Monday is our usual meeting day. And in May, the Fourth Monday is Memorial Day. And she wants it moved to the Third Monday. That's her suggestion.
We can do that, definitely.
I thought it was a great open house on Saturday, and I thought it was a nice article about Susan Maxwell in the newspapers, the Volunteer of the Year. Also, part of my report is, I think I've mentioned before, that I was on this Rec Department Committee for a year and a half. And last week, they started to share the results of a Rec Department survey with the community, and that's ongoing. And I just thought, I wanted to share two things about the library, because there were a couple of questions about facilities and programs at the library as part of this survey. And one of the key findings is Lacy Park and Crowell Public Library are by far the most-used and most-important facilities to households in San Marino. These facilities receive the highest usage, most importance, and still meet the community needs well. That was across a few different questions. And then, there was one about receiving information. And since our publicity is something that we often talk about, I thought it was interesting that the five top methods of receiving information are by far this activity guide. And it costs $5,000 to $6,000 per printing, and the library pays 10%. I think that's a good investment. The other ways of receiving information were the city email, newsletters, the city website, and school email and newsletters. So that's my report. Steve?
All I wanted to say was that I thought that Cindy and the team at the foundation put on a wonderful open house, and it was great to see so many people there. It was really a terrific event. I was very, very happy I was there. Kudos to all.
Were you going to say something about, oh, the granddaddy of the mall?
No, I would not say. I would never. I would never...
A week ago today?
Yes. It was, yes, it was exactly, yeah. At 5:15 in the morning, my daughter gave birth to my first grandchild. Very thrilled about that.
Oh, wow.
Will enjoy her, so she's 10 pounds, one ounce, very healthy.
Wow.
Yeah, right? And she's doing great, and she's gorgeous.
Oh, my God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
10 pounds?
Wow.
That's a achievement. I'm dreaming myself.
Eldon, do you have anything to report?
No, I don't.
Lois? Genevieve? You were at the...
Excuse me, I have something that maybe we'll talk about later. This past week, my wife tried to get onto our Internet and get some information, financial information, and had through the city website, which is what you have to do. And she had great trouble getting into it, where she, in the past, had not had any problems at all. So she came in and met with Eric, is it Eric that works down there?
Yes.
And he's, she said he was just great, helped her out, and was able to do it. But she was not able to sign on from home. So I don't...
Is that kind of thing?
Unclear. Sign on to what part of the website?
Well, we are, you sign on to the city website, and then you come to the library, is how it's set up. You don't come directly to the library website. And that's what she did.
Well, maybe we can talk offline, Irene. I don't know if you're aware more of the details.
No. You can't type in crowellpubliclibrary.org and go directly to the library site.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we'd like people to be able to enter through any door.
True.
So I think it's important, and we hear more about that.
And maybe just get a general report back on the status of the website.
This Eric that she met with down here said that he'd had a lot of complaints about it. They'd been hearing a lot. So I don't know if they're coming to you or not, Irene.
Not, really, no. I haven't heard much. We can work on it, and we can reconfigure our website so it's easier to use.
Yeah. But we, the manager of the city website is the one that figured ours?
Amanda? Do you want to answer that question?
There's a question, right?
What was the question, Mark?
The person or company that set up the city website, do they also set up ours and manage ours?
Yes, it's integrated. It's the same website, really. And that's why I know, I know the library website used to look like a separate website, and it no longer does. And I know you guys like it, but our site, it was actually purposeful to make it more of an integrated website. But all the information should still be there. Like Irene said, you should still be able to go to crowellpubliclibrary.org and get all the information you need.
When we had the website, it worked. When the city has a website, it doesn't work.
Yeah, I think regardless, we need to report back to the status.
Yeah.
So I'll follow up with you and get more details on, or maybe with Eric downstairs, and we can see what the problem was.
Genevieve, do you have a report?
I don't have a report today, but I had a pleasure to help on judging the bookmarks. That was pretty fun. It was difficult, too. There's so many good ones. I think one of them made it that I picked. So it was fun.
Mary, do you have a report? And you want to vote?
I don't have a report. I had actually a challenged calendar over this weekend, so I wasn't able to. This is actually the first time I did not attend an open house, given how many years I have been in a library. I do have a comment about the summary report in terms of the communication from the city, the most effective way. Was there specifically mentioning about the Chinese population here, since we do have a lot of immigrant population?
Yes.
I don't know if there was anything addressing to the communication channels?
Yes, there was. And the demographics of the people taking the survey and the demographics of the city as a whole are in that. And I'd be happy to stay after the meeting if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, I'd just like to see if the demographic is properly reached, because they are quite silent and may not be able to represent themselves.
The survey was given in both English and Chinese. And I think something like five or six people took it in Chinese, but they didn't all write back in Chinese.
What, in English? So they are more like population like me.
Possibly.
I can buy them.
And that might make sense in that people who've been here for a while are more invested in helping the city by giving their opinions.
Right. Well, the other one, they're not capable of. I think it's not, they are not interested or vested in, it's just they're intimidated. They're probably not capable of doing that for a while.
Mary, do you have a Crane Art Gallery report today? Let's go on to that Agenda Item.
Let's go on to the Crane Art Gallery report. Okay. Crane Art Gallery for half received $65 from Dr. Denton's show. So that is very generous of him to share. I know he has a huge collection. I mean, his capacity is incredible. Okay? And we are putting in order to lightbulb and several additional light fixtures. This sounds like something routine, but this actually is a struggle for our Crane Art Gallery, because our struggle is, should we have a brand-new system, you know, or just have replacement bulb? Apparently, this decision is made now until we further decide if we're going to extend our budget and to go in better, finer, assuming what we know, what that fixture looked like. Our calendar is booked all the way to April 10, so we're still good, three months. We have January 10 to February 21 for Chinese brush painting. That's Dorothy Shepherd. It's actually currently going on right now. And then after that, we have February 29 to April 10, a cricket painting. So we do always invite our local artists who is talented and able to express their unique talent, unique creativity, to come and exhibit our Crane Art Gallery. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Any questions?
So you said that you're trying to upgrade the light bulbs and the light fixtures in the Crane Art Gallery?
No, this was just a replacement. I think they were interested in, for a while, we were discussing about how to project the art, but we don't know what that should be like, because our current system is relatively old. It's, yeah, with the library, as old as a library, or, I don't know, it hasn't been changed ever since I'm involved with the Crane Art Gallery. Maybe Irene has.
Yeah, the art gallery started in 2009, and those are the original fixtures.
Right, so it's been 11 years. But she's just only wanting a replacement for now.
Yeah, because I know you have about $700 left in your Crane Art Gallery, well, the city's budget.
Right. But we have a line item, right?
Right.
I think so. We're more sensitive to our line item.
Right.
We want to keep hold of our item.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, new business, trustee's calendar. Irene?
I have not developed the trustee calendar yet. So I will do that, and I will send it to you. We'll change the May meeting. And then, last year, we were off in July.
Right, and December.
And December. So I can do that, and I will email it to you today.
Isn't there, this is just a little...
Thank you.
And then you wanted a special meeting in February, correct? Because you wanted to meet with Josette.
Well, let's see where we get to with the budget and our discussion, if that's necessary. The public library closures calendar, which is page eight of our packet. And then I noticed, too, that you're closing on February 14.
For half the day. That's for an in-house training with rec.
What's the training?
Well, I think we're, because we're trying to integrate, we're going to find areas where we can really work together.
What day of the week is that, February?
That's Friday.
Oh, that's Valentine's?
Yeah.
Okay, city budget process calendar.
I'm going to turn that over to Robert.
Can I try to make some copies?
Is it in the packet?
I don't, didn't see it.
What we can do is, do you have it? Yes? Okay, I'll make a, building copies of it for you.
She said, "This is great." She is duplicating the budget calendar that's from the recent city council meeting, and it's the city council's calendar. But as Irene and I were talking a couple of weeks ago, we thought it would be helpful to show, because we're a couple of years out of the tragedy of not being included in the city budget process. Now we're very much included in that process, and that's what the calendar is.
Thank you, Liz. I know you have a lot to do with that.
And one of the things that Robert and I spoke about is, we have an interim community services director, Josette Espinosa, and she oversees both the library and the Rec Department as part of her duties. And it's, she is the one who's going to present the budget and the capital improvements to the city. But she doesn't work on Mondays. And both the library board of trustees and the recreation commission meet on Mondays. So as we look at what we're getting into with the budget calendar to see, what Robert and I had spoken about was the possibility of maybe we meet for an hour on a Tuesday or Wednesday afternoon, when Josette is available, so that she hears our comments directly as she moves forward with the budget. I don't know if we all feel that's necessary, but that certainly is one option for us.
That would be a separate meeting than this?
Yes.
So there'd be more than one meeting, two meetings?
Yes. We did that last year, too, and we did that two years ago.
It was helpful.
If you want, I can go over this calendar.
Right.
Thank you.
So we already said we passed the January 31st meeting. No, we didn't. That's this Friday. My mind, we made the packet, so we passed it. This Friday, we'll be talking at the council meeting about, we're going to give a status update on kind of some of the priority initiatives, which we consider the one-time special projects that staff expense either resources or money on, as well as just the general operational plan status update. And then from that, we'll also go into the first initial brainstorming for next year's priority initiatives. So the way it works last year, and it will work again, is that staff brainstorm some initial ideas, just kind of initial gut check of ideas for projects that they think from any department are interesting. Council will see a list of those, and then they will be able to add their own to them. Then we'll do an initial vote, where council will be able to vote probably on, with sticker dots, a little interactive process on the ones, not that they're committing to right now, but they're interested in learning more information about. Any of them, they get probably three or more votes, will then go on, and city staff will work to kind of develop action plans, figure out a little more about what the cost would be, what the resources would be. So if anyone's interested in that, they have ideas, and would like to come speak about them, Friday would be a great time to do that. In between that is the February 12th meeting, which is the mid-year financial review and the five-year forecast. That will be at the Wednesday meeting on February 12. And then, like I said, at the Friday meeting again, we'll go back to the priority initiatives. And that will be when council will do kind of, again, another pairing down. They'll see the action plans and the issues, and they'll kind of choose the ones that they want staff to incorporate into the budget. Doesn't mean they have to be, once we get to the budget process, they could still remove them. I think last year, about three of the 15 were removed at that stage, but at least it tells staff to go incorporate them into the budget. In March, we're moving this up from last year, just so you guys are aware, we did that in April last year. We'll be doing the capital improvement plan presentation, so that's why it's important, obviously, for you to keep talking about your priorities and get them in sooner this year. Josette's working with Michael Thron, our executive records director, on what the library and recreation will need in that. Then in April, at the end of April, we'll do the preliminary budget session, where they'll go over, we'll go over kind of a rough draft of the budget itself, with department plans and presentations. And then hopefully, in May, we will have a budget for adoption. And if we need to make any changes, it will go to June, but we're hoping, like last year, we can get that done in May.
Great. Any questions?
Based on your understanding, what do you think we are? Our budget is coming here. What does it look like?
Robert, do you have more of a sense of library?
What's our library's budget is going to look like?
In regards to if it's going to be reduced, grown, anything like that?
Ah, yes, of course.
So right now, Josette and I are looking line by line, and it's looking like it'll probably be relatively the same. The only main difference may be the capital improvement plan, and we'll talk about that for a little bit right now. But as far as any major changes, we don't foresee that happening.
There is any growth for the personnel compensation?
There typically always is. It's usually a small percentage, though, like 2% to 3% increase. And that's just because of raises, overtime, costs related to personal benefits.
That is on the agenda this Friday.
Right.
All of the agreements will be voted on by city council.
Right, so those will...
Yeah. So pretty much the same.
Pretty much.
When do you anticipate that we would be looking at the budget draft in terms of how this calendar will work?
It's a great question. And that's largely because I've been in conversation with Paul Chunk, our new finance director, to figure out what the timeline looks for me to be able to produce that. I haven't really gotten much of a answer in regards to that. So right now, I'm still kind of in limbo to figure out when we need to create that draft.
But it looks like, am I correct, that the April 24th city council meeting is when they would be seeing it for the first time?
That's correct.
Or the packet, you know, the week before?
And what we did, if anyone who was following the budget closely last year realizes, is that last year, we split it up, and we did a more rough plan earlier of kind of like, these are the key changes. I think there were some people who liked that, some who didn't. So this year, there was just kind of an idea, instead of having that initial one, we're going to move up capital and move the budget presentations back a month, and have it be more of like, when they get the budget, they're going to see everything. Still a draft, where they can then give feedback, council and anyone can give feedback, and we can adjust it. But the idea this year was to try being able to present not just the like, quick overview and then the full budget, but just kind of give them the full budget to have a little more clarity, instead of just a high-level picture of it. So we would technically delay it a month from where it was last year, but that wouldn't mean there won't be progress made, and probably conversations before that.
Yeah, and what it's looking like is March 27, so that Monday, we would probably have some draft, at least for the library.
So in question about the capital improvement, is that going to be, we're presenting a manual of what we want, and the city, who makes the decision which item is the council? Okay, we make the decision as to which item would be received as the most important, or we make the recommendation, what is most important that we would like to see?
So it's more of like what the board wants to see, what they would like, and then ultimately is the city council of actually funding it.
Yeah, there's a lot of steps involved. I mean, obviously, the board would have a huge impact in what gets presented. Then Michael Thron, the director of Parks and Public Work, is involved in trying to make a holistic city plan, because he needs to consider every department. So we really appreciate your expertise in the library, but then he has to try to bring together and understand the needs of the city overall. The city manager will then give you the capital improvement budget and see what she feels, and then it goes to council. So there's a lot of steps in the way for information, ideas. So that's why it's not, it's coming in March, it's going to start much sooner, it's already starting. And I think the sooner you get your feedback, the better.
Right.
I think that programs that, Irene, that you feel and your staff feels are the most important, and one I'm thinking of, we lost the Best Sellers program over the last year, and we lost it because we lost the funding source.
Right.
But I think that was an important program, because it also brought people through the front door.
Correct.
To get their bestseller. So the Best Sellers and as an example, but other programs, if you could be looking at the budget regardless of the funding source. And moving some of the funding around from less important to more important, to bring back something like the Best Sellers program, I think it was about $3,000?
Right, and so because of that, yes, we do have funding in other areas. So just looking at the current budget, there's several accounts that we have money that we can move around. So I'll take that into account for next year's budget.
I'm not saying Best Sellers, I'm saying what your staff feels is the most important.
What, we'll look at our statistics as we go forward. The print circulation has been dropping, as we know, over the years. What's going up is the electronic books. And we have a program called Overdrive Advantage, where we can buy the license to a book that can just be checked out by San Marino cardholders. So that perhaps could be expanded.
So is this the time where you get the hard costs from Overdrive and looking at that?
Right, and of course, that scene is changing, as we know, like Macmillan. Did you hear the story?
No.
They won't let you buy a copy of their book electronically for the first eight weeks that they're out, something like that.
Why? That's what everyone wants.
They want an exclusive copy. They want to sell hard copies.
Or an electronic copy.
Or your Kindle copy.
Or electronic.
They want to sell it. They don't want you to borrow it.
They want to make money for some reason, who knows?
There was a lengthy article in the LA Times, I'm sure some of you saw it, about how residents get library cards in different cities to be able to get the limited accessibility. So do we have that issue here?
Well, we're in a cooperative with about 20 other libraries. So when electronic books are purchased for our cooperative, there's often a wait to get the book, so...
But some apparently are quite exclusive, with only a few copies available at any time. Are there any books that are of that group?
Yes, because they're so expensive, or because Macmillan...
Right, so with that, right now, if I'm understanding, just to know what you're starting to talk about, this overdrive would eliminate the need for them to go to anybody, but rather be available for residents first?
Yes, correct.
Gotcha.
New business number four, library and Rec Department training. Did you want to say anything else?
Not really. We're looking forward to training with the recreation department to really see where there's places of overlap, where we can work together and do programs together. Rebecca's already come up with some great ideas, like a walk and read in the park, or a walk and talk, where you talk about books while you're walking around. Yes, yes.
That's very cool.
It's very cool. She's a cool gal.
Exercising.
Yes. So that's what we hope to develop, is common programs. And that concludes my report about that.
So the next item, continued business capital improvement. We're going to talk about the awning, the birth audiovisual, look at the updated costs and the timeline. And this is from last April 23rd, something our analyst, Chris Yu, made up, and this is what was going to go to the city council, a list of capital improvements and capital equipment. And since then, there have been a lot of changes, and Robert did a great job of updating this for today's meeting.
Thank you. So yes... So yes, so I'm going to touch on this very quickly. First thing is the awning. So that was finalized and birds to the PO and they are currently creating the frame for the traditional awning to go over the main entrance. So fingers crossed that should get installed, all goodwill, by the next trustee meeting.
Woo.
Wow, that's awesome.
What did you say?
By, by the next trustee meeting, it should be installed if nothing goes wrong.
And this is not just for rain, but for the sunlight?
Correct. So there will be one traditional awning over the main entrance, which will just look like what you think. And then over the wooden beams will be coverings to help mitigate the sun as well as the rain. Because I know the bookshop typically has those challenges when it gets like that. The fabric will be a sort of off-white to match the exterior of the building. And so that's moving forward.
And that's going to kind of go all the way across the Friends Bookshop to the end where those steps are to the women's room?
Correct. It's going to cover all those, those.
Nice. And do you think that will mitigate the water problem into the Friends? The floor?
From what I've explained, it's a sort of very thick umbrella fabric. So short answer, yes, it should.
Should.
So that's moving forward.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for a question?
Yes.
Because I don't recall, is the, the fabric that's going on top, the beams themselves, are they sloped downward? Okay.
Yeah. So that was a challenge and that was something that we discussed numerous times. And so that's just something we're going to have to keep an eye on to make sure that it doesn't hit when the water comes in. And it may be that if there is rain, we just go with a broom and shake it out.
Yeah.
Oh, is it? Is that adequate? Do they think that's adequate? Because water, the physical form is going to dictate where the water drains.
Right.
Right. So did they give a specific indication that what we're doing is good? Because think about it, who wants to go in the middle of the day to do that?
Right.
I mean, who, which step are we going to send? You know, not that we rain a lot, but which step?
Well, eventually.
We're going to send Robert.
Yes.
Has Director Thron weighed in on this as our city engineer and he feels confident this would be the appropriate item?
Right. And so, and it was also funding reasons. So if we went and did a slope, we would have to create a whole new frame and that cost about another 10 to 15 grand. So.
The only reason I make a comment is I have, I have a house that is faced the same way as the library does, I've got the same thing and the fabric. So there's, there's water issues that usually result, so I just keep it a good thought swing.
Yeah. And so we'll, we'll keep an eye on it. And what our vendor informed me was that the fabric should last five to 10 years.
Oh, that's, that's very different. Five to 10 is double the age, you know? I mean, I can't really figure out that range.
Right.
I think there are they, I mean, realistically, I mean, I would say five, I wouldn't say 10 or.
Depends on the weather too.
Right.
That's true.
Yeah. And so, you know, if temperatures continue to rise, we'll see how the fabric holds up. But what he informed me was when it touches into the beams, based on what he explained to me, it'll be bound down to the wooden beams and there's these small enough inlets to let some water drain through. Again, I won't really know until I see what's going to happen.
Or they can put drainage over there anticipating they're going to be drained. I mean, you could type of gutter structure or something and just anticipate and work with it. That way we don't have, I mean, because we actually have a case study right here, giving you the most accurate projection.
Right.
So do you really want to have a lot of drainage issues, you know?
Right.
So or maybe some micro correction of the structure that we may not need to.
Yeah. And so Michael was involved in all the meetings and so based on the conversations that we had, he said that this should be fine.
But Michael did not have real experience. He has no experience. This is a funny comment. They all tell you everything you want to hear, you know? Vendor always tell you everything you want to hear, but this is the real thing, okay? This is what waited the conversation. This is a reference to what that project is going to look like in the future. And we don't want to be blinded, we're lucky to have a case study like that with the same orientation, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So I would recommend that we do review that reinforcing the structure or drainage, anticipating that could happen.
Was the idea the, for just the shade or for rain mitigation for the, for that part?
I was not involved in initial conversations. That was with Chris Yu and Irene, to my knowledge.
The answer is yes.
Okay. Okay.
Football.
It's going to be great for shade. For sure, for sure, for sure. It'll be great for shade.
And, and a couple of years ago, on a Wednesday, about three o'clock in the afternoon, one of the doors, the front doors, cracked. It just cracked apart. It was the wildest thing because of the heat.
The heat, yeah, hitting it, yeah.
So this, we hope.
You're talking about the one over the, for the, for the front door here?
Correct.
I was just talking about the, the other.
Yes. And, and we're hopeful that that will cut down on the sun and, and the rain issue.
So do we know exactly what it would cost to have a slope on this, the frame difference?
So from one vendor, it costs about $12,000 total. So our current project is 4,000. And that was to build a whole new frame to put it over the beams. And then the other recommendation from another vendor was not to cover the beams at all, but to create separate awnings, dome awnings for the bookshop and then the windows. And that one was going to be about another 20,000.
This, this is so reasonable. I mean, let's try this.
Yep.
You're only talking about less than $4,000 rather than 12, let's see how it works.
Yeah.
That's the idea. Yep.
I can certainly envision this pool, water pooling on this zone in the rain and being a problem. Real rotting the canvas unless someone's out there with a broom.
Sure, I've got a broom. I'll be broom.
The question is who goes there, what type of library? Once you experience it once, if you really make your life your individual.
But we'll see how it goes.
And can you speak about the bathroom?
Yes. So Entelisys is handling that RFP. They are currently working with Public Works to get that posted onto our Planet Bids site. So once that's up and going, then we'll have a timeline out when we're supposed to receive the bids and then go on from there.
And this just under 20,000 continues to be the cost that you're looking at?
Depends on the bids that we receive.
And what did the city council approve in the last budget cycle for this?
19,500.
Okay. So that's what we told them we thought it would be?
Right.
Okay.
So it could go up, it just depends on what the vendors propose. Because right now it's redoing the speaker system, the projector, and then all of the connections. So some people might go the 20,000 route, something like that. Some people might cut it down. It's just depending on what technology they propose. Because we also asked for HDMI with the capability to do the VGA little pins. So depending on what kind of adapters they propose, that could increase the costs. We don't know.
So someone who rents the bathroom could step right up with their laptop and display it through an Apple TV or a?
Yes. We're also recommending that, or if they want to connect through HDMI.
And how many do, how many vendors do we have proposing this?
We don't know yet because we haven't sent out the RFP. So in order for a project like this to just move forward, we need at least three bids.
When we do, three?
We need at least three bids to move it forward.
Because I know in my experience in this electronic stuff with audio visual stuff, that unless you have competitors.
Right.
And unless you let everybody know they're competing, not, I don't know what the prices are, but just that there's competition, they tend to bring the price up dramatically. And so the best way to get a reasonable price is to have very intense competition in the bid.
Right.
Yeah, I do want to make comments on electronic because I'm definitely handicapped when it comes to that. And we have probably assuming half the speaker female, they do use their computer. Perhaps a simple, more solid thing, I mean, that do we really need every gadget on the system? We just need a gadget that works.
It's going to be pretty simple and straightforward.
Simple, straightforward.
Yes.
People like me can operate. I can go in and feel confident, okay, past library is easy for me to speak. I hook it up, I just do this and it works.
You're going to be able to go in with your phone and go like this and go like this and be on the system.
Exactly. That would be, that would be ideal, but we don't really need a lot of, I don't know, when you use HDMI, what does that mean?
So in the newer age computers, if you notice on the side, there's like little lit, like a wider USB, that's the HDMI. Because in the back olden days, it used to be a bunch of pins and that was the VGA connection. We don't have that anymore. But now we've become more wireless. So HDMI is in a sense, the past.
Okay. So we're going to do HDMI or we're not, we're not doing VGA, but we're doing HDMI?
We are doing HDMI with the possibility of a VGA adapter, but VGA will not be the default.
So that you could bring your old laptop?
Right.
Or your brand-new laptop?
Or your brand-new laptop, yeah. I, well, I just don't think, I never use any of the gadget that I, whenever I'm ready to use it, I basically just plug it in and if it worked, good. If it doesn't work, I'm calling. You know? So I think for our speaker and our staff to make it less intimidating, that we, we don't have to keep on training them to manage a very complicated system.
Right. And that was language explicitly put in the RFP now that I remember, was ease of use to ensure that staff does not have to monitor the system. Because we don't have that time or that capability.
Yeah, we don't have that time.
Right.
And the capability. And a lot of them, the very high-end gadget goes away very quickly and it breaks very easily and you, you, you handicap, it actually ended up, the whole system is not operable.
That has been taken into consideration.
Yes, thank you.
And the public use computer replacement?
Yes, so the big enchilada.
That, that's a, from 35 to 75,000 is a pretty big spread.
Yes. And so the reason for that is because.
What page is that on?
We're still on page nine and it's the third item on this list.
So the foundation is not handling the RFP, I am creating that, so I'll be the one overseeing this. So the reason there's the spread is because Entelisys, in order to help me create the bid specifications, we need to know the extent of the replacement. So as we all know, the computers have a monitor, tower, mouse, computer, software. To what extent do we want to replace the items? Do we just want to replace absolutely everything? Do we want to replace just the towers? Do we want to place the towers and the monitors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? What does the board want to see?
Is the monitor broken?
Well, see, that's the thing. So the monitor, the mice and the keyboard work, but if we want to get faster computers, then we could just replace the towers. Or is it that since we have the money, we could replace everything?
Well, what's the staff's recommendation?
I would say that we do want to replace the monitors because one went out, remember, in the children's room?
Right.
And so they're really, probably the monitors are reaching end of life.
Yeah, how old are they?
2014, so.
Okay, so six years.
And so.
And are they all used regularly?
All the time. It's crazy.
Yeah, they should be replaced.
Well, the new, new monitor has all the graphic, you know, for gaming. So the new, new computer, I just updated mine. So the new, new monitor is, is probably visually more stimulating, you know? Yeah.
Yeah.
The foundation is funding, right?
Yes.
In total?
Yes.
And they have 75,000 pledged?
Well, why don't they just do the whole work?
What did the, what did the city allocate for this project last year in the budget process?
I can't remember off the top of my head.
I don't think it is.
I think it was 75,000.
I think it was.
Yeah.
But it seems to me if the foundation has 75,000 dollars and they're willing to give that to the new computers, I think we have to drop off. I mean, why do they keep me off?
I think the reality is, is to maintain a, as a foundation, they need to, they can't hold money very long. They've got to pass it out. So they probably want to do that if they're, if that's something they've been looking at and they have the money. They don't want to hold it in a bank account.
Do they specify?
It becomes a problem as it to be a nonprofit.
This is a two-page list though, of other things. And my question is, and I would like to know the answer to how much did the city put aside for this project last year? And then spend that and have the foundation fill in for complete renovation, complete replacement of the computers? So if the city said 20,000, then, and it costs 75, then the foundation comes forward with 55,000. So we set, spend what the city allocated first. And then we ask the foundation maybe to help pay for some of these other important projects that we're going to talk about too. Susan, do you know about this?
I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but I'm.
It's okay.
And I hope I'm dead wrong, that we did not allocate because there was a concern about the specifics and I think it was the issues that have been discussed here. How many, how complete? That seems to ring a bell. I'm going back a year and we had many, many items, but I think there was some confusion about.
There was conversation citywide about computers and staff computers and how many we had. And I know, I think there was originally a proposal for the library computers and the city computers and council directed us, like, let's figure this all out together.
And it overlapped. And so the city had funding for, to replace those public computers in one account and in a second account.
And not just public computers, but just all internal city computers. And I think, I know, staff, I know Josette, the city manager are working to figure out the actual replacement cycle for all city computers. And I believe it's probably coming back in this year's budget of what that action's going to be, but I don't have either of the specifics.
It might be helpful for next month's meeting to have the details of that presented if you.
All the time. When I come in here, they are, yeah, when I see it, yeah.
Mark will remember.
Yeah, he will.
Yeah, because I know right now the city is funding for the staff computers, but I don't recall ever that they're being approved funding for the public access computers. Yeah. So then that being the case, what I'm hearing is replace the entirety of a public access computer in terms of the physical elements. Now in regards to the required software, do we have Microsoft Office on the computers?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So then we would want to replace that. Do we want to install Adobe applications?
No.
So, no?
No.
Okay. And then we also don't have the intent of connecting it to the, well, the same access that it has to the printers that it currently has.
Their public, the public printer.
Right. The other question that we had was, so replacing these computers, what kind of ports did we want? So Entelisys is very wary of allowing for USB connections because as we know, people might bring in something that they're not supposed to. Do we want to still allow that on the public access computers?
I would say yes, because we have, we use deep freeze, which when you turn the computer off, completely erases the computer's memory of all this stuff. It erases any viruses and anything that was on it. So that's been protective of us for these years.
I've never heard of that, that's awesome.
It's, it's, yeah, it's a program that...
I'll just make sure that they're comfortable with that, if they're comfortable with it.
Yes, exactly.
Right, yeah, because I remember renewing the, the contract for deep freeze, but it's still something that Intelisys wants to just, because no software is perfect. We don't know who might get through.
What about the antivirus, uh, software program, are we also using it then?
Yes, we would need that.
We will have to have those, right?
Right. Okay.
What about gaming? Can, can the public have access to use our computer for gaming?
Oh, yes.
Oh, is that what they do?
Some of them.
With our computer, are we allowing them to game?
Why not?
That's true, yeah.
Robert, are people using the thumb drives as much? I mean, I feel like, you know, I'm all in the cloud, I feel like people are...
I will tell you, Liz, that several of our USB ports are broken, and you should have heard the complaint.
Okay, so it really is...
They're not, they're not very sophisticated users, so they, they use their thumb drive.
Okay.
And really are mad when they can't.
Yeah, I could see if they're trying to prepare a resume, enter some USB to get their resume, or a USB to take it to Kinko to print. I could see it's a major challenges for them, because, yeah, I, I think. But we have a deep drive, we wipe it out, right? If we have this software program which wipe out everything including virus.
Right, correct.
You had made the comment that some aren't sophisticated users. Are there periodic classes or tutoring available? I know our computers joyfully get a lot of use, but, um, is there a way to assist those to become a little bit more proficient in their use?
I believe that Recreation Department has been offering computer...
But nothing within the library in sort of a real time? If you're coming over to use it, say, on the first Mondays at such and such, there's a little...
We have not been offering that, we've been offering tech time, which is, uh, show me how to use this, make it go.
I, I'm just thinking in terms of longevity of the computers. We all want to be optimistic for the coming years in budget planning. We know at some point the economy will again turn down, and we know at some point we may have to tighten up the city budget. And I'd hate for it to coincide when the computers start to have normal wear and tear problems. So to get as much use out of them as we possibly can in, in terms of their care, might be helpful, and it's just a thought for those folks who are coming in. And they would feel more empowered, I would believe, also.
I think so, yes, we'll look into that.
Shall we go and talk now about the other projects that the library and staff have identified?
Sure. So, the other projects, we did not submit any new capital improvement projects for this coming fiscal year. So what we have here is what has already been on the list. The question that Michael Throne posed, Josette, is since you did not pose any new projects, are there things that we want to potentially move up? So, to the board, are there projects on this list that we potentially want to move up?
Let's go through them.
Um, one potential, one little typo is on the second page, the first line. That's supposed to be interior painting, not computer room renovation. Um, so then, going through the list, the window tinting, so up, up here, I guess, the second floor, quote-unquote, these windows let in us a large amount of light. As a result of that, the library gets pretty hot, it's glaring. And because we're going to install new public access computers, I'm assuming that this would be a higher priority project to lessen the deterioration of those computers. Correct? Am I saying that, assuming that? Okay, so this is one project that we have slated down. The approximate cost is thirteen thousand dollars. And I know we kind of put it on the wish list, so it could...
Sorry, is this window tinting, is the type of, what type of material is this tinting? It's going to be done, is there a material study for the tinting?
It's like a three M product, isn't it?
A three M, it's a three M product?
No, so you know how when you get your windows tinted on your car? It's like that blackish kind of film? It's something similar for these windows.
But it doesn't have to be black and you can't see it necessarily from the outside? We've done it on some of our living room windows, because of the sun, and you can't really see it, and it's been over twelve years.
Wow.
Yeah, I have one for twenty years.
Yeah.
So that's what's proposed for the window tinting. And then the security camera system. This project may be accelerated, because right now our current Google Nest cameras pretty much don't work for us anymore. Um, I know Irene's been having trouble renewing the subscription, so we cannot go back to the recordings. It, it's basically live viewing, and that's it. So as a result of that, we're going to look at getting an actual security camera system, potentially CCTV. This may also be accelerated, because Liz had mentioned a report coming from the chief Ueda about improving the safety conditions here in the city. So this may be something that can help address that. Does that look good for next year? Yes?
Let's keep going.
The other item is, I'm sorry?
When you say next year, you mean the, the, your twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one?
The new fiscal year.
This new one?
Yeah, so it'll be twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the Crowe Library Reservation Server, I'll let Irene speak more on this one. To my knowledge, it's the public access reservations, correct?
Right, and that has been migrated to the, uh, to the network server.
Okay.
But that's the one that got fried out when we...
Right.
So I think they were able to restore it.
Right.
That has been migrated.
Is it going, is a new server going to be required when we get brand-new public-use computers?
Sorry, so that's a conversation I need to have in Intelisys. Depending on what actual technology we get, if they recommend that we upgrade our servers to be able to handle the workload, then yes.
Is it included in the RFP?
We'll put it as a no to whatever they recommend. Because, again, I don't know that, Intelisys does not know that.
And then what is the funding source code?
The five ninety-one. So there's a difference between the capital projects and then the capital equipment. Well, not, non-capitalized equipment or...
Capitalized.
But is this mean the city's paying for it?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, just, I, 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 is this reservation meaning something to upgrade our reservation for people to make reservation for our facility, or what is this?
For the computers, for the public internet access computers.
Oh, okay. What about for reservation for our bathroom to make it easy on the computer with that, if you ever do? That's two different things.
Yep.
Yeah, that's two different things, and that's something more in the realm of recreation, since Victoria Marshall's the one that handles those reservations.
Right.
So what the plan is, is we currently have a software called RecTrack.
Right.
We are anticipating an upgrade, hopefully in the next few months, and that'll potentially be expanded to allow full room reservations. Again, we'll see, for all goodwill.
And I stand corrected on that, since it was under five thousand, it was not capitalized?
Oh, yes.
Interior painting on the top of the next page.
Yes, so in two thousand seventeen, the exterior of the library was painted, and as we kind of see, there's been a little wear and tear on the interior. So that's been something slated for, eh, not this fiscal, this coming fiscal year, but the one after. Is this something that we may potentially want to bump up?
Well, in the young adult room, there are, there, there's like a missing this much paint in one of the corners. And I like how you wrote, this project may be phased in over time, because that allows the library to continue in operation while one section is being repainted. This room may not need it, and boy, it would be pricier to paint this room. The young adult room and the children's room may need it a lot frequently. So I guess my question is, why do we have to get special funds for this? Why isn't this just part of the routine of public works to keep the library?
It's a great conversation that I would have to have with Michael Throne.
Thank you.
It should, yeah, I would think on a scheduled basis, I don't know how many years you have, but that would be something I think would be...
Right.
Uh, on a regular maintenance basis.
Right.
Of all of the city buildings.
Right, so I, since, again, since we didn't have anything new proposed, we can have that conversation, because Michael Throne and I and Josette will either way have that conversation. But, yeah, so we can prioritize the young adult and the children's areas for now.
Is Michael good, would he be easy to work with? Does he help, very helpful, yeah?
My eyes went to the young adult room and the children's room. Your eyes, because you work here all the time, first of all, you may get blind to it. But then, you're, you may see more important places to be repainted first, like at the entrance. I defer to you. It doesn't have to be the young adult, except for there is a big hole.
Yeah, we can look into it.
And so, and I think what we're seeing is, this should not be a capital improvement or equipment request, it should be something ongoing and regular.
Ongoing maintenance.
Okay.
Is that...
I agree.
This is a good idea, Liz, should we have a line item just for painting for our budget?
Well, I'm hoping it doesn't have to go in the library's budget.
You voted it as a city.
Susan?
Right. The city building, yeah. It would still need to be budgeted and, um, uh, what am I saying? Capitalized because of the amount. It's a separate discussion, because at that point, it would be built on a, a cycle.
What's the non-capitalized amount, what, what's the threshold?
Under five thousand.
Oh, we don't need five thousand dollar painting work here?
So if we did four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars in painting every year?
It, it should be removed from the CIP planning and could come under just the regular.
Yeah, I see.
Yes, because we're doing section by section anyways, or as needed.
Yeah, as needed, yeah. That, I think only a few rooms really need it, like this room, look, we're looking good, right? This room doesn't need it.
Is there a schedule of a normal maintenance for each of the buildings in the city? Do we have one?
That I'm not aware of, do you know of anything?
I'm not sure if there's an official one. I know the painting's probably not a priority with funds. I don't think there's regular painting happening in any building, to be honest.
And I think the wear and tear varies with each building.
No, I understand, but, but I mean, each building having its own maintenance cycle.
We, we are not that sophisticated yet. In the last two years, we have gone up, wouldn't you agree, exponentially in the way that we have begun to budget.
Right.
Um, I, and that's a good question, Alden, I envision us in the next year or two moving into something like that. What's really helpful to city council, these are those barn burner, seven-hour meetings where we go through every item. Um, hopefully, this year, we won't do as much of that, but there are council members who do want that, um, to see where your priorities are. And by putting those by year, it helps us a lot at this point, since we haven't developed cycles. Just knowing what's high for you and what you're trailing along for coming years.
Well, if, if that, based on what you're saying, I think some of the room, it's, it's priority to get them painted. I mean, our resident is San Marino, they walk into the children's room and the paint has this discoloration of this, and then, and then the carpet is stained, you know? Only those area, not everywhere, like, look at this room.
The high traffic.
High traffic and high use, and by children.
Well, and the young adult room, if you guys could even put in some kind of a, I don't know, order or request, because what's going to happen is that's a big chip of paint off, and the next thing is they're, the pens are coming out. And then they're going to chip away, and let me tell you, I've been there, done that. And so before it gets worse, so. So you'll bring that up as you're talking with Josette and Michael Throne?
Yes.
Let's go on to, what is a bottle-watering station, anyway?
Well, you know, I bring my, my water bottle into the library.
You're very ecological.
I'm so ecological, and I can just fill up my, my water.
That's wrong with the fountain.
Yeah, so it's usually like purified water, like there's one at City Hall. That same station, we're proposing here at the library.
Yeah, that's a, that's a...
Very cool.
That's a...
Lois, the notion there is like, we're in the water fountain, so the pressure isn't great, you got to go like this, you can't fill it up and it makes a big mess on the ground. This is a, where you're the water fountain with, that also has the thing behind it, we have it at LMU, and it's got a thing, so you just fill up your water bottles and go.
Yes, and airport has that, too. I mean, since this is right at the entrance of City Hall, what have you observed the use of it to be?
It's a good question, because I'm upstairs, I don't see as much down there.
Do you hear?
But I see people using it, I, I use it. Yeah, I definitely see people using it. I haven't heard any complaints that the other one, the normal fountain, is gone.
They're putting them in at the schools, the San Marino High School has a couple of them. And so our, our, um, community members and users of the library are familiar with it, I guess, so.
I would say, I think the city, I'd say, oh, there are cups for coffee and things, so I think maybe that helps to, to the few people who don't have a bottle, they can still get water using the cups, maybe that makes something...
Does it use the regular water supply, or do you put in bottles of bottled water into it?
No, it's the regular water supply, so it connects to a pipe.
Connect to a pipe.
I think it's filtered.
Yeah.
And filtered.
So do we need to replace the filter element, or how, that's a, that's a, once you put in the station, the water maintenance, the filter, it's, it's, I mean, it's an update, a maintenance thing.
Right.
And is five thousand dollars a current, accurate estimate?
That's what we currently have, and I don't think it's gone up more in price, but it also depends on how much...
Installation.
Right.
That sounds high, I mean...
Yeah, high, it sounds high.
Like, a lot of money if they just have something where you filter water. But I, I haven't, maybe I should go to the City Hall and see it, I don't know what it looks like.
That costs that much, you might not sure. And this should be a month, an annual maintenance for changing a filter, no?
I, I would expect with good use, you'd need more than one filter per year.
Oh, yeah.
And those of us who have them in equipment at home, no, they're not inexpensive. So maybe to budget out and even order a year's worth of filters.
Well, let's see what the City Hall's experience has been with that, too.
But this will, this, this item is really a great item to add to really elevate our library.
Yeah, have you seen the system?
I've seen it, I've never, I haven't gone behind the scenes with it.
Is there a website we could go look at on this system?
What's the brand of it?
I mean, a manufacturer's website or something?
There is a manufacturer's website, but I don't remember the manufacturer, and I can get that for you.
Okay. Maybe you could, maybe the next meeting you could tell us what it is, we can just go look at it.
But do park right next to City Hall, bring your container with you, get a feel for it. It's literally when you walk in the door on your ride, you don't need to disturb anybody. And we have contractors coming and going all day long in the heat of the summer. It is my hope that they will be stopping and filling their containers as they come in. So just get a feel for it, and if you don't feel it's user-friendly, that would be helpful to bring back here.
Do you like it, Susan, do you like it?
I have not used it, because most of us either come with our own or spend time in the bathrooms where we have our closed session.
Oh, this.
Some of them get really fancy, like, some of them are like motion, like activated, you just hold them, and the light comes on, and it's just a, you know...
Let's not do that.
No. Robot arm comes out.
Robot arm, that's like our coffee machine, robot arm.
Yeah.
So, yes, so it's the LKHEZH2O station, so this one right here. Oh, I'm trying, there we go.
There you go.
So, it's a no-touch system, so that's the other thing, is it's hygienic. So you just push up your water bottle, it'll sense it and it'll fill up, and then once you pull away, it'll stop.
Oops, what did I do? I grabbed it, okay.
Where is it physically planned for?
The water fountain's right here on the downstairs bathroom, near the bathroom.
It would stay where it is.
Anybody else want to see it?
I think a good idea is to put, yeah. I think I saw them a lot in the airport.
Yeah, in the airports.
I always put my water bottle after the...
Security check.
After the security check, and I would, I would appreciate a water station.
I mean, that's a real luxury.
Lois is wondering why we don't just drink out of a hose like we used to.
Let's go on to computer room renovation. Irene or Robert, go ahead.
Is that the one you said is interior painting, it should be?
No, the first one. So the first computer room renovation should be interior painting. Um, the second one is correct.
Okay.
So as you all may be aware, in the downstairs lifelong learning center, right? Yes.
Yes.
So there's a nice little room that has one computer in it with the...
Dacom.
Dacom. That hasn't really gotten any use. So what is proposed is to instead make this a study room or presentation room, something like that. So that's what we're proposing on this particular item.
So the idea is, uh, the back two-thirds of the room could be cut off, perhaps with a sliding glass door or some kind of thing, so we could still see in it. It would be a study room then that could be used by up to six people, because there's a demand for that. And then we'll put the Dacom computers in the front third of the room.
Yeah.
And, uh, so that would make much better use, we believe, of that space.
And is this twenty-five thousand dollars a current and accurate figure?
It has not been updated.
Okay, let's go on to news and information monitors.
And I think, so this is what we currently have, we use a lot of A-frames to display all our information.
Right.
We want to be able to put, similar like what we did at the circulation desk where we have the wish list, we want to have something similar to that. But instead, putting like city news, updates, things like that for the public to see.
Yes.
Where?
Where would that be displayed?
It's a great question.
It's a great question.
Um, so that would be something that we would have to figure out where the high traffic, where the high visibility, high-traffic areas. Once we've determined that, then we would say, yes, put a monitor here. It could be over at the reference desk, it could be in the bathroom. We have no idea where it would be located, because then we would also have to figure out where can we actually install this?
Indoors and outdoors, or just indoors?
Right now, I'm understanding only indoors, but if there's an outdoor recommendation, maybe.
Well, it seems like those sandwich boards are outside.
Right.
So...
So that's, you're still fleshing that out as far as a need identified by the staff? Okay, let's go on to the Thornton Conference Room projector.
So, similar to what the bathroom has, we want to put a projector in here. Let's just, we don't know how. So that's what we're trying to figure out.
I'll bring you the purchase orders from the wellness center that we did at the high school. and I think if you put a large display in an Apple TV, you're good, or a fire sticker, whatever, and just let people broadcast to the TV rather than a projector. I, I think because of the light in this room, too, that the projector would be hard to see the image. Where on a display, like a TV set, you could.
It's a good idea.
Need to know where your, well, where's electrical?
It's similar, Robert, to what we have in the, in City Hall. It's a little smaller than this room, but the same, we just have a computer projector, so anyone could plug in, like they said. It seems like a similar system.
So maybe we could look at that, too, and see what would meet the needs.
Can I agree with what Liz says, as somebody who, I give presentations, I have a projector, a portable one, and the size of the venue and how bright it is makes a huge difference, so if you could plug into a existing monitor, it's much more effective.
Yeah, yeah, we can look into that.
And a lot less expensive.
Yes, a lot less expensive.
And then, additional items under consideration, well, I just wanna say, because I was emailing to Robert and to Irene, I said renovate the young adult area, and some of that is because I've just been working on this wellness center at San Marino High School, so I've seen some of the furniture and worked with some of the students, and then, we have some real threadbare furnishings and flat beanbags in the young adult area, but that may or may not be a priority for the staff. Purchase new seating and furniture for the public areas also includes reupholstering, rather than, because some of the... It's really in great condition when you think about the usage of our furnishings, but it may need to be redone. And then, bathroom lighting?
Yes, so we had a community meeting, no, not a community, state of the city with Mayor Shepard Rami, and so, one of the complaints was that the lighting in the bathroom was a little too dark, so we're revisiting that to see what may occur. So if we're doing the A-3 upgrades to the bathroom, we're like, we may as well touch the lights if that's the case, too. That's a conversation, though, with Michael Thromp.
Are those, I'm sorry, are those original lights in the bathroom, do you know? So they're probably not LEDs.
No.
Okay.
They're too bright or too dark, there's no, like, nice dimming feature.
Oh, no dimming feature. So isn't that just a light bulb away, and then you have a new light bulb, you can replace them?
So we could, but again, that's a conversation, because we may, we might wanna do, like, very energy-efficient lighting, so that may require just changing out the entire fixtures, or it could just be the light bulbs. We don't know yet.
You can have a lot of energy-efficient light bulbs nowadays.
So, given that our next meeting is February twenty-fourth, and then, some of the CIP, Presented the Public Safety Commission, is also at the end of February, what I was hoping, and... Let me put this in terms of a motion, so it goes into our minutes. So I move that we ask Irene and Robert to update this capital priority list. I'd like to see a column go in at the left that's numbered in order of the staff's order of importance of the things that have not been done yet. And anything on, that's not on this list, that the staff thinks is really important. And then, for the top three, to be, the cost estimate to be firm. For instance, if that computer room renovation, let's really look at how much that plate glass...
Sliding door.
Door would really cost, is twenty-five thousand an accurate, good estimate for that project? And then, the board can look at, what are those projects the staff feels important, are important? What is the priority of importance, what should go to the city for our requests? And then, what might we ask the foundation for? Or what might we use the fifty-one thousand dollars in donations that we have sitting over in the city account?
Okay.
That's my motion.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
What, when is the deadline for this project? Do we propose it before our next meeting, or will we have...
I would like to see this at our next meeting, an updated list with the staff priorities and those bigger part of the... The important priorities, a better cost estimate, you don't take time to do all these cost estimates, but those that...
The top...
Right, because I think also, if we're gonna go before the City Council, you have to have a pretty firm cost. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll have to ask him.
Right, I also think we might provide a subcommittee to help them with this process.
Okay.
To make timely decision, and sometime when you have estimates, very difficult to make a good decision. So we could provide on our board a subcommittee, such as Liz, you're very involved.
Thank you, Mary.
That way, we can give very timely feedback before the next meeting, so they can make a lot of decisions in terms of what to decide, how to decide, and all that, to come out with the estimate, so that's...
So is anybody willing to be there if Robert and Irene need our service?
I'm happy to join, join, have a good discussion.
So if that's something, but Mary, I think in terms of my motion, my intent is, I know how I would put my one, two, three, four in order, but what's more important is what the library staff feels is their order of importance.
Yeah.
And that's what I'd like to see.
I'm on the second.
Okay, so I made a motion, Eldon seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go on.
May I make one comment? Yes, I think brief succinct justification goes a long way with City Council. Sometimes, we see something, I'll give you an example, the police department wanted new tasers, and I said, but they're only five years old, the warranty's gone after five years. So with the water fountain, that would be a real obvious environmental issue that should weigh heavily if you'd like to manipulate us. So, those justifications really help.
Like, these kind of descriptions here, these, even more than that.
Something like this is helpful, but I think, not so much what is now, but what it will do for the future. Not what you're needing to improve, but what would you hope to gain.
Great, can do that.
Wish list update, Irene?
Well, the wish list, as you know, thanks to Eldon's good advice, we've put up on our monitor as you come into the library, and already, already Marilyn Peck has given us a cricket machine.
Wow, nice.
Yeah, it was really nice. A cricket machine cuts things out, you probably know more than I, so it'll be great for our children's department and also for the adult department, because we have displays and such. So it's been very effective in its place. And that concludes my wish list update.
Number three, can the minutes be taken by a board member?
So, that one is, as we all know, Chair Walno brought that up at the last meeting, and so Amanda was able to bring it up to our attention, that the City Council had made a motion that all minutes were action minutes. As a result of that, we cannot change the format of our minutes until City Council permits it.
That's all.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we did confirm with the city attorney, too, if you wanted to take an additional one, they're a little concerned of two official records.
Oh.
Clinton heard if you took your notes and maybe pass them out, but official records do have to be in action.
And can I just jump in, saying if we had a board member do it, then that board member's busy taking notes and not fully participating, and then you're up to the whims of that person's note-taking ability, and I think these notes are great.
Yeah, I do, too.
Number, administrative analyst report, the financial budget report for November and December, starting on page eleven of our packet.
So, spending is going well, no surprise there. In regards to, skipping over November, but into, let me see, December on the budget monitor. So, our expenses are pretty much on par, since this is now the mid-year, so we should have expended about fifty percent of all of our budgeted monies, we're about that range. Some of these accounts have gone a little bit more, but that's fine, so, like, for the children's books, that's only a three-thousand-dollar account, so we're expending that, and then we have a two-eighty-one donation account, which we can also tap to, tap into for the children's books. In regards to revenues, so, in regards to library fees, we're already at seventy-one percent of what we anticipated to receive, so we're doing well on that end. The one that we're not so doing well is the passport fees. So, we are only at about thirty-eight percent that we anticipated to receive on passport fees. We would like to be a little bit more, since that's our big revenue generator. That's the only item that I have of some concern.
Do we have any reason for that?
Just, I think the season, you know, people in December are really getting their passports.
Okay.
So, it'll probably pick up.
It'll pick up, okay.
Was it in line last year's passport number?
Well, last year, we had the drive to get passports, everybody had, a lot of people had to get them that hadn't, as an ID to fly internationally.
Real ID.
Yeah.
Yeah, the real ID thing, so that's, that drove that, I think, a lot.
Yeah, so last year, at the same time, we're actually ahead. So this year, we're at sixteen thousand, last year, we were at eleven thousand. So we're doing better this year, but we would just like to be doing better. And then, we've just gotten a lot more money than we anticipated for the children's material donations. So, that's good.
Councilwoman Jacobowski, do you have any budget questions?
I do not.
Isn't this great?
It is. When I looked at it this weekend, I was confused if it was my City Council packet or if it was the library packet, so it really does eliminate a lot of questions, and thank you.
And can you just go over the donations box at the next page for Susan?
Yes, so that little donations box at the very bottom is what was the...
So at the, at this big sheet, sorry?
Bottom left, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that is what City Council committed to our donations reserves, so that was the amount at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then, any additions or subtractions will be taken into account from what is currently happening up here on the top table.
So we carry that over from year to year?
And where am I seeing that total dollar amount at the top table, so, of where you're planning on using fifty-one, or part of it?
So we haven't tapped into that, so this is what's budgeted. So on the expenditure totals at the very end, what we've spent is about twenty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, and then, thus far, in revenue, we've received almost twenty thousand.
A clarity question, so if this year, we have received a donation, does it go to here? Or this is just a carry from previous year, right?
This is a carry from previous years.
Previous year, so this amount is not, so this, we have addition, so for example, Queen Anne Gallery, we have seven hundred dollars left, plus, we have twelve thousand, right?
Right, and in order to tap into the reserves, you need City Council approval.
I see.
So what's up here, City Council already approved, we can tap into these funds. To tap into these additional funds, we would have to take back to City Council.
Even though it's our money?
Yes.
So with the light fixtures, so for example, we will have a proposal to City Council, we're gonna change that.
I think you bring it to your, to this board first?
Yeah, if the amount exceeds what we've already, because you have, so, like, about seven hundred dollars left in that one line item, if it exceeds that amount and you need additional monies, then that's a conversation that we can bring back to the board, but if it's gonna fall under that amount, we can just spend that money.
Yeah, that's why she only replaced the light bulb.
Shall we go on to operational plans and priorities?
What page is that?
So, one of the conversations that we had...
There isn't a page in our packet that goes with that, sorry.
So one of the conversations that I'm having with Josette is a spending plan, and so, with our new finance director, Paul Chung, he advises us that we cannot do any last-minute purchases, so if, you know, people like to spend all their money because we have money at the end, he's not gonna approve anything, so if we do surplus spending at May and June, it will not get approved by the finance department. So, we are working with Irene to create a spending plan, to be able to make sure that whatever monies we do have to spend, we will. So, for example, one of the questions that the librarians had is mending of the books. So it does take a process, staff have to be up here painstakingly repairing any books. We have money, we might as well spend and buy new books. That's one of the things that we may bring up forward. There are also monies to be able to buy new outdoor furniture, we may as well move forward with that, because we have that budgeted, so those are things that we are proposing and working with Irene to move forward.
Gotta buy, buy, buy.
Susan, when the books are discarded by the library, they go to the friends, and the friend sells them, and they give us back the money.
Doesn't get any better than that.
It's a racket.
So that's all that was really on that end.
Let's go on to the city librarian's report.
Well, let's start with the friends of the library, we have at least three months of minutes in your packet, because they couldn't get a quorum, but they finally did get a quorum, and they approved their minutes. So as you can see, the friends are doing well, they've got two new board members, they also did a mailing before the end of the year, and that brought in quite a bit of revenue. So that was very good, so congratulations to friends. Moving on to the foundation, they are the ones that put on our open house this year. So not only Delicious Destinations, but the open house, which was very successful. And as, as we know, they grossed over a hundred thousand dollars from Delicious Destinations.
What was their net?
And they're, they spent twenty-five thousand, so seventy-five thousand.
That's good.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Of course, it was an outstanding event with lots of labor. I enjoyed receiving a personal letter thanking me for my donation, and I'm asking this rhetorically, because I really don't know the answer. Have the acknowledgement letters gone out for those donations that meet the IRS threshold?
I believe so, I, I got one.
You did?
I got a better.
I did, too.
Then, it is in an envelope and a bag with letters in my home. I mean, for tax returns, so I just wanted to make sure that those have all gone out. Excellent, thank you for being efficient, and with the foundation, it was very, very nice to receive a personalized letter. Please pass that along.
I will, I will. Moving on to operations with staffing, we hired a new library assistant, Brianna, and she is, she's a librarian, but she has no experience working in a library. Is that all? But she's fitting in very, very well, and learning the ropes rapidly. We still have not filled our librarian one part-time position, because people who are librarians now don't have to work part-time, there are jobs available. So we'll have to do some planning and see what we can do about that open position. If you're looking at statistics, the outstanding statistics, we can see that the print circulation is continuing to sag. I just came back from vacation with the head of publicity of Los Angeles Public Library, and he says their experience isn't the same thing at L A P L. But if you look at the electronic section, the eBooks, those are going up, and also, Hoopster is going up, which is the e-magazine.
You had that in your note from the librarian, in the paper?
Yes, yes.
May I say something about the eBook thing?
Sure, sure.
So back in October, the eBook download was forty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-nine.
That was a very odd number.
But then, in November, it was eight-ninety-three, and in December, it was eight-eighty-six, and that makes more sense. I don't buy forty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-nine, there are four thousand households in San Marino. That would mean that every house took out ten eBooks in October. I don't believe it.
We did recheck that, that statistic with, through Overdrive, and it came up that way again, so I don't know, maybe it's a flaw in there.
Well, I don't buy it, and I'd like it if you could just not include it in the year totals.
Okay, sounds good.
So what do we do with that, do they overcharge us for forty-seven thousand?
Oh, no, no, no.
I don't know what that number means, I need clarity.
Well, the eight-hundred about number is the number of downloads of eBooks from Overdrive.
Right, but what Liz is saying, that she doesn't buy that, so that, that meaning, is that...
She buys the eight-hundred number, she doesn't buy the thirty-thousand number.
Right, that's a big difference, right?
Yes, and it's highly anomalous.
So all I'm asking is, in the one, two, three, four, fifth column over, where it says, year-to-date is forty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-sixteen downloads, I don't think that's accurate, and I would appreciate, I'm not gonna buy that.
What page are you on there?
I am on page thirty-two of our packet. I would love to believe it, but I don't believe it.
No, we, it smelled when we downloaded it, so...
Right here, the eBooks, we're, we see eight-ninety-three for this month, seven-oh-eight for a year ago, but we're including that forty-one thousand as we go across in our annuals, and I would prefer to not do that. Thank you.
Perfect.
Go ahead, Robert.
Are there any other questions, questions about statistics? Moving on to programming and services, we have been exploring the idea of doing housebound delivery. We don't know how much of a demand that there is for it. We did have, we did do a survey before about five years ago and there was not much of a demand. So we may, we look at that again. We're hopeful also that if there's more downloadable books, perhaps that that could be useful in a, in a homebound situation.
I noticed you had that in the guide.
Mm-hmm.
And perhaps you could add that it's also if you're short-term homebound.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yeah, that's a great idea.
When you've just had surgery or something like that.
Or a new baby.
Or a new baby. But then you don't have time to
No, you don't have time to read it. You don't read it at all.
Crazy.
But the downloads are available as well.
Yes, that's a great idea. In fact, we should put that in a did you know?
Oh.
Yep, good idea.
Open house, as we said, was very successful and I appreciate everyone who came. And I got to do Chinese storytime. My little storytime.
You and Vanessa did an outstanding job. Truly outstanding.
She's, she, she upstaged me though. I was a little, hey, girl, hold back. She was fun. She was so fun. Technology and marketing RFID update. We have finished tagging all of the So the self-check is available for use.
Nice.
And we, we opened it up on open house day and everybody just kept coming up to it and using it. It's like, oh! So I think that's going to be very successful and it's going to help our productivity, which is the FDS. I also wanted to say we had volunteer of the year at open house, which was Susan Maxwell. She has worked for 27 years since she retired from being a Spanish teacher. Hand checking the order of the books on the shelf.
Wow.
For a year. Yes.
Irene, she made a comment in her speech that with the new RFID, that won't be needed anymore. Is that true?
No, that's false.
That's what I thought. Okay.
I thought she's getting out of it.
No, she's not getting out of it.
We do have a scan. We bought the scanner. But, but you have, you load a certain amount of the books into that and then you can see there in order on that shelf. You know, that kind of thing. So it's not, it's not a panacea at all. We still need our Maxwell.
Oh, okay.
Who's going to tell?
She just was trying to get out of it.
Also, Kudos, go to Eldon. She helped us with the RFID.
So, and thanks to Eldon for helping us get the RFID. It's taken us a year and a half to tag 90,000 books.
Wow.
Ninety, yeah.
But they're tagged, so here you go.
Great, great to have it done.
The power was out yesterday at the, at the library. And that's because they were working on it at Huntington and we're on their line. So it was gone.
Did they tell you ahead of time?
They did, actually. It was nice. I just, I'm, I have a plan to attend the Public Library Association conference. And, and I'm hopeful that Rebecca can come too. That's going to be in Nashville, Tennessee. And that, yeah.
Can I come?
Can I go too?
Sure, why not? So that's going to be, starting on the 25th of February. So that
And is that something that we help you fund?
There is money for, there is some money. So we'll see how we can split it and how we pay for all that. So that's, that's going to be great. A final thing I wanted to say is I just came back from the Caribbean.
Yes.
And it was great. The chief thing I learned about was nutmeg because Grenada is the spice island. Well, I don't know about you, but I have a little tin of nutmeg in my spice drawer that's probably 25 years old. They had an ad that says, your tin looks like this. You need to get it some more nutmeg. So I never knew what nutmeg was. Well, they, they, they don't pick it. They wait till it falls on the ground. And, and then they, it's a rounded nut. And then you scrape it.
Yep.
I was like, God, are you kidding me? So that was a big eye opener for me in Grenada. The second thing is I did a survey, right? The things that delight. I asked, are there any public libraries on Grenada? And they said, oh, there was one.
There was?
Then the hurricane came through in 2014 and took the top off of it. So it's just sitting there moldering. It's moldering. It's just a heartbreak. But then we went to Barbados and that seems to be a much livelier, more developed island. And they said, oh yeah, there's a West Indies cooperative library system and they have libraries everywhere. So it's just Grenada. It's just Grenada. It doesn't have all the integrity. So that is my West Indies report.
And that's disappointing to hear considering the growing size of the medical school.
Right, where my son's going.
That would be a very gracious thing for them to give back to the citizens of Grenada.
I think it has to be completely rebuilt because it's just so moldy.
It would be very generous based on the profits they make.
Well, thank you for your report and we're going to adjourn our meeting at 9:07. And we meet again on Monday, February 24th at 7:30 AM.